The attachment.
Well, like air conditioners, I mean, like parts might be taken. One year.
Okay. Call the meeting to order, please rise. For the ladies.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Boss.
Present.
Pipia. Graham.
Here.
Hughes.
Present.
Fry.
Present.
Troller.
Here.
From.
Present.
Barnes.
Present.
You have a form.
All right. The first item of business is approval minutes. We'll do the first one, September 24th. Does anybody have amendments?
Yes, Mayor, on page five of six, number four, under newspaper articles, that should be Mayor Grant instead of CM Boss.
Which one, number four? Oh, okay. All right. You don't want credit for that? I'm just kidding. Anything else? Is that it?
That's it.
Did anybody else have amendments? I didn't entertain a motion to approve those as amended.
Move to approve the regular minutes of September 24, 2018 minutes as amended.
Is there a second?
Second it.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven oh. The next item are the special meeting minutes from September 28th. Does anyone have amendments? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Move approve the meeting, special meeting on September 28, 2018.
As presented?
As presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven oh. All right. Next up is public comments. If you are not on the agenda and you would like to share, you're welcome to come to the podium. You are allowed up to five minutes. Say your name, your address, and your ward. We will move along to business and discussion items. Charlie Weickert, I see you're here.
Attorney General, counsel. I'm here because I didn't know whether I should or not. Pony Express Museum is going to have a celebration, October the 20th, to celebrate a birthday or an anniversary, if you will, of 50 years of National Congress authorizing national historic sites and national historic trails. The Pony Express Trail, the Oregon Trail, California Trail are passed through our area, and we want to recognize the National Park Service for helping us to preserve the history of these trails. And the Pony Express carried mail for about 18 months, and then telegraphed, but it's out of business. The Oregon Trail, the California Trail, carried people walking to California for the Gold Rush in 1859, 1850s and 60s. But the fact is, we, with the Pony Express Museum, asked the National Park Service, and we signed up and partnered with the National Park Service to improve our historic site here in Marysville. We are one of two buildings on their original site here that have national historic significance. Hollenberg Station, just down the road 15 miles, is a little cabin relay station. Our barn has a place where they stapled the horses for the Pony Express. And so we're trying to make a celebration to the birthday celebration, if you will, honoring the National Park Service. They have helped us tremendously in recognizing that we've got a problem we didn't even know we had. In case of an earthquake, the walls, the rock walls of that barn, will move at a different speed than the posts, that main support system that holds the roof up. It's a post with a beam, and a post, and another beam at the roof. And if that post system wobbles at a different speed than the rock walls, we may not have a roof, and we probably won't exist much longer. I didn't know it, but there's rent monies available to fix that. It's beyond our ability to handle, and we were able to get a grant from the National Park Service to do that. We'll be talking more about it, and you'll see more action down there this winter as we proceed to stabilize those joints between the post and beam of the barn roofs, of course. October the 20th, we occupy all of our real estate and only have alley and sidewalk or other private property to use other than in the structure. And so, in talking with Austin, it seemed appropriate that I would request permission to not necessarily close the alley, but we're going to be obstructing traffic in the alley by holding a forge demonstration of the blacksmithing activity on the sidewalk, on the sidewalk and alley, right at the flagpole, the northwest corner of the building. We don't intend to really close the alley, but it's appropriate that I think we should notify you people of the impairment of the traffic on that alley.
So, that's from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM on Saturday?
Correct.
Okay. And Debbie, did you, have you communicated him what?
I don't have it. I haven't had a chance to do it with him.
Charlie, have you had that section, kind of sectioned off before for an event or two?
Well, we've parked the stagecoach out there in the alley. It's what we call parking for our museum, because our building occupies all of our property there.
I was thinking you served a breakfast there or something a couple of years ago, too, in the alley there.
Correct. We did, and we closed the alley completely before that. But I think it's appropriate that we were able to get some funding from the National Park Service through the Department of the Interior to preserve a vanishing treasure.
Yeah, I think that's great. That's great. I wrote Debbie an email and was concerned about that Saturday, you still have traffic from RX Drug Store and CMH and Porch Swing. And she did contact them, and they were a little concerned. So can we do it, can we instead block off the street in front of your building where that parking is and block that off?
Well, that'd work even better.
Okay, because that way they can have access on their alley, and their businesses won't be affected.
And that's where I didn't think that we would necessarily block off the alley. We'd still need traffic going through there, but it would be a traffic hazard of pedestrians and so forth.
Yeah, if they, since they're open on Saturday. So you have, what, three or four spaces in front of yours? Is that enough? Or do you want to go all the way down to Elm? Tell me how much space you need.
No, those three or four spaces.
Just in front of yours?
Right.
And do you want us to get barricades or take cones? What do you want us to do? Do you have barricades or cones?
No. We don't have none.
Can you make sure there's barricades down there?
I think probably four traffic cones, two on each side of those would be plenty of work on the street and...
And why don't we notify shooters who own that building and let them know we want those spaces cleared? Is that okay for this event? So you don't have to...
They're a resident park.
Yeah. They can use the rest of it, but just those right in front of, we'll keep, make sure those are open.
It just seems appropriate to me that we need to get the word out of the service of a national historic site that, in talking with one of the guys from Salt Lake City in Oregon one time, he says, "How come we don't know about your historic site?" I said, "I don't know. We just got a big brass plaque on the side of it that says we're a national historic site."
Well, I take everyone that comes and visits me through there, and they all love it. They think the people that do, the tourists do an excellent job. So I applaud you for that.
We'll be closing, and then October, the end of October, for the winter, and we're going to do some construction activity in the barn for the roof, but we also have some construction activity we need to do in the main auditorium that was built in 1991 as our museum.
All right. So do you guys have any other questions for Charlie before we make a motion? So just, I would entertain a motion, just marking off the street instead of the museum for that day?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven oh. Okay, Charlie, thanks for coming, and let us know all the work you're doing down there.
Thank you, Mayor Beare.
All right. The next item is Wayne. Is Wayne here?
No, he wasn't going to make it tonight.
Oh, okay.
For this consumption request, I said he'd be okay.
I thought for sure he wanted to come and tell us about it, because I didn't know anything about this mystery party. Did you guys know about this mystery party before you read this? It sounds like fun. So October 27th, at Lee Dam Art Center, and let's see, what's the timeframe?
Six to midnight.
Six to midnight. Oh, there it is. All right. You guys have any discussion, or you want to make a motion?
Move allow March County Arts Cooperative, the alcohol beverage from six to midnight on October 27th, their mystery party.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven oh. I just wanted to hear more about it. I'm sad that Wayne's not here, so I have to wait till I hear it on the newspaper, or read it in the news, or hear it on the radio. All right. The next item is police car camera request. I see Chief is coming to the podium.
Hey, and this is the car cameras to go in that Explorer we purchased here earlier this year, during the summer. Does not, did not find a car camera, and we're looking to put one in it. It's the exact same camera that's in all the other cars. It's by state contract, or state bid, so we're sole sourcing it. It matches the system that we have now.
I guess I didn't realize that all our vehicles have cameras as well as the...
Has body packs as well.
Yeah. I didn't realize that.
It saves us a ton of money for court, because it's what happens happens. Video don't lie.
Yeah. Do you guys have any questions for Chief?
Like I said, into the county attorney, because we work a lot with her court. She's through their drug funds, they have an offer to pay half the tab for it.
Okay.
Are there any strings attached from the county attorney?
There's no strings attached.
Great. Great.
Matter of fact, they a lot of times help us pay for certain programs and stuff for our computers. If it pertains to something that we help the county work with, they'll pick up half the tab on that as well sometimes.
That's an installed price, Chief?
No. No, we'll have to go down and have it installed. He needs to have the console installed as well. That's where he put the radios and stuff. We already have them, but we waited until we can get all the equipment before we have everything set up for him.
So this is just a...
Otherwise, you pay two install charges.
So this is just a camera?
This is just a camera system itself.
Okay.
And the automatic download. These things download right to the building when the vehicle pulls up to the building, so we don't have to touch the video anymore. It's all automatic.
Okay. I would entertain a motion.
Move to approve the bid to put the camera system in Sergeant Oldie's Ford Explorer in the amount to the city of $3,713.50 coming out of Capital Outlet.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Seven oh. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Chief, you hold on just a second here. We were just noticing here, when we were going through the deals here, on that Boss Motors, they got a deductible on seat of $100. Do you know why?
Yeah, any, any, that bit was actually mine.
Okay.
The frame of the driver's seat was bent, or was back and forth, it was working its weight, and they had to replace it. But any warranty work we have done, there is $100 deductible on warranty work.
I remember that.
Okay.
We've discussed this before.
It's outside of the 100,000 mile powertrain.
Right.
We buy that extra warning for the rest of the car.
Right.
That extra warning has $100 deductible on.
Okay.
Yeah, I remember discussing that.
Okay.
On warranty work.
What's going to be bad is, I don't know, I don't think that it has been sold, because starting in January, we're going to have to run all our vehicles either CINC or...
Well, maybe, maybe not.
That's a maybe.
Yeah.
So we're hoping we don't have to run them.
That's right. We hope all goes well.
Chief, did you want to talk about the ACV thing now, later? Would you want that to come up?
Well, I got an email from Debbie, and then said that you sent 58 pages.
Yeah, it was like a real bear to try to get all that in there, but I also sent some notes and things.
Is that the stuff I sent you?
Yeah, but I kind of, kind of cleaned it up a little, not quite as much as you sent me.
But what I did, I did a list, or...
Yeah, because I combined it with some other stuff I had, and then tried to send it out. Actually, I had to send it a couple of different files, because it was so much.
Well, she was just recommending, sending it to the police committee.
Police and fire.
Have them review all 58 pages.
And so to make sure, I think I kind of came up with a list of ones in there, the things when I discussed it with other cities, questions they said we should consider.
Recommend.
Kind of goes over all the other ordinances. If you read through them, the commonalities between them, so, yeah, whoever, if the police and fire...
Are you okay with that, Chief?
I just thought while he was up there.
See, we've already had stickers made once before, because when we had the car show years ago, we first allowed those down there. I got a roll of stickers, probably eight of them on there still, that we stuck on the front, it has the year and stuff on them. You could punch them out. So if you want to see those, we shall as well.
So on police and fire, we only have two people on that committee?
Correct.
Who's on that committee?
Bobby and Diane.
Bobby and Diane. Do we need to put a third on there?
There's, I don't think there's ever...
There has been a third.
Well, last time, you had Keith on there as well. He was not replaced.
Yeah, well, I'm just thinking, it's so hard, because with two, it's kind of odd. It seems like we should have three. Does someone else want to serve on the police and fire committee? Add that to your list. Okay, maybe we'll just leave it at two then. Okay. Thanks, Chief. So Debbie, well, Debbie may, maybe setting up a committee, or Cindy. Okay. The next item is the RX Drug Store. Is there anyone here for that?
David.
Dave, are you going to cover this? Tell us what you know.
There was a placement awning there on the front of the store, it's under that sign. It's got your own little map. Shows the red is what overhappens the right-of-way sidewalk. Ordinance just says anything overhappening to the sidewalk, you're supposed to approve, so.
Okay.
Sign, everything should be fine. It's the last major.
Are they putting these on both windows, on the main street side, on Broadway side? On both windows?
Yeah, I think that's what they're posing there on their windows.
Yeah, looks good.
I understood they were just putting them on the one window.
Front window?
The one closest to the door or farthest from the door?
The one furthest from the door. I thought, because I asked them. I could be mistaken.
Less window decorating? They always have a good window.
I know.
Okay. You guys have any questions for Dave about this awning or concerns?
It looks pretty and white, and it'll help cover that little slope going up there a little bit.
Yeah, I think it looks nice, too.
It looks more traditional, actually, kind of like historically they had.
Yeah.
So seems appropriate.
So you just want us to approve the awning as presented?
Yeah. It's all Main Street approval, five of me, you just got to approve the overhang.
Okay.
Move to approve the new awning at RX Drug Store with a five-foot overhang as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven oh. All right. The next item is, Butch, you want to come up and share on these resolutions, just so we know your thoughts? So the first one is for 921 North 14th Street.
The property that started getting cleaned up, the lady who owns the property and lives there when she's not in the hospital, she started to do some cleanup, but she's not able to do it herself. She had her grandson doing some stuff for her, but he's out of the picture now. I don't think she's willing to hire anybody to do it. It's not going to get cleaned up unless we clean it up, and I get complaints from neighbors on this property every week. It's time we just take care of it.
Yeah. So this, this looks like a kind of a hard one to decipher, what you're going to do exactly.
Well, the weeds, the weeds need to be cut down. The junk that's piled around the garage needs to be, I don't know if there's room in the garage for that stuff. Have no idea. I've never seen inside the garage. You know, like the wheelbarrows, stuff like that, just need to be put in the garage.
So will the owner be there when you do this?
Well, that's a good question. I don't know. She's in and out of the hospital so much, and she won't talk to me. She likes Austin.
So, Austin, will you let her know when we go there?
She doesn't like me.
Just...
Once we pick a date, you know, where our crew is able to go up there and clean it up, we'll, I'll contact her, or I'll attempt to contact her.
Mm-hmm. For guidance, or...
Well, yeah, you know, it would be nice if she could be there.
Yeah.
But, you know, most of it is junk.
Yeah. Okay. Well, just make every attempt to contact her and work with her. I know you've done a good job about that. I'm not...
I sent her a letter the very first week that I was on this job. She refused the letter. I've talked to her once, and she hung up on me, and I was being very nice for me. She's talked to Austin. It just needs to be cleaned up.
Okay. All right. It sounds like you've done everything that we need to do.
Yeah, I've done everything I can.
Okay.
I move that resolution number 2018-07 concerning the property at 921 North 14th Street be approved and signed by the mayor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Seven oh. All right. The next property is 12 of 5.
Walters. That's a big...
Which we're more familiar with.
Yeah. That's the one that's been going on long before I stepped on this job.
Yeah.
And it just needs to be resolved, because he just keeps moving more stuff in there. The pictures that are laying there in front of you were taken this morning of those three properties.
So is that shed gone? The little shed, gone, that was on Carolina Street there in front of this property?
You mean, you mean the shed? You know, when I was out taking pictures this morning, it was raining, it's a doggone hard, I didn't even notice whether...
Yeah, it's not there. It moves, apparently.
No, wait a minute. You're, the first page was the backside of the property.
The one on the front? Yeah. But this one's the front, right?
Yep.
Wasn't it right here?
I think it's behind, hit by that bush.
Oh, it's behind the giant bush.
Yeah.
Okay, never mind. I thought maybe that was...
It's still there the other...
I was looking for signs of it.
It's there.
That property is probably going to be an ongoing problem even after it's cleaned up.
Well, the real problem is, I mean, do we sit down and talk to him and say, this, you know, once we clean it up, this, we need to keep it at that level? I mean, do we have conversations like that?
Quite honestly, Carla, I have never met the guy. I've never personally talked to him. I think maybe Dave has. I don't know that he, you know, I think he kind of goes in one ear and out the other. Is that a safe assumption?
And he owns his property.
So he's been here?
So he owns his property.
Yeah.
And, okay.
He owns the property, and, you know, I think the city's held his hand and granted him extensions far too long.
Well, we actually did go and clean it up once, partially, right?
Yeah, but you couldn't tell it by looking at it that night.
Yeah. I'm sure that our neighbors would...
He's got more there now than he had when we started on.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
You know, he started cleaning up in the backyard here a couple of weeks ago, and then I get up there today, and he's got more stuff in it.
You, but you didn't talk to him about it.
I wouldn't know the guy if I met him on the street.
Okay. It's just...
It's hard to make contact with people if you don't have a phone number for them, or if you're not real sure where they live.
Mm-hmm.
And then this guy, I'm not real sure where he lives.
If he's there or not. Okay. So is everyone in line to proceed?
Is there, okay, if we clean this up again, what are we going to do if it gets looking like this again?
Well, I'll tell you what I'm going to do, Darlene. We get this property cleaned up, I am going to drive by that property every week, and the first time I see anything else moved into there, he's going to get another notice. It's just that simple. I'm not going to let it get out of hand like it is now.
Well, that's good to hear.
Move to approve resolution 2018-08.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven oh. All right. Moving on to 9 of 5. Counting.
This is another one that's been going on for a long, long time. He starts to do some cleanup, but then he keeps moving stuff in, although not to the extent that Walder does at his property.
Is this house currently occupied, you know?
You know, I don't, I don't know whether Danny lives there or not. I've tried to contact him, because I've got a phone number on him, but I keep getting this message that his inbox is full.
Oh.
So it's kind of even hard to leave him a message. I used to run into him occasionally before I took this job, you know, but I haven't, haven't seen the guy for a few months.
When we go in and clean up these properties, do we go knock on the door and say, hey, we're doing this?
Well, I think we need to let him know that we're going to do it.
We did Walters that year, last year or whenever Walter was there. Because you had explained to Walter 50 years ago.
Okay.
They will hopefully copy of the resolution, too.
Email them the copy.
Certified letter, signature address.
Or we hand deliver. Or we hand deliver.
Actually, I think I'm going to hand deliver these.
Okay.
I think, I think...
They're treasures, you know.
We can do both.
Can, yeah, can, I think they need to be hand delivered, just because I don't want any surprises for our guys when they get there. Entertain a motion?
Move to approve resolution number 2, 2018-09.
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Butch.
Thank you.
We appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Dave has trained you well.
He's a good teacher.
Okay, Dave wants to follow up with us? I'm sorry, what?
Listen, we have the other two in two weeks, correct?
Is that true?
The other two's in two weeks.
You gave her a chance to come back in two weeks to discuss something different. At the end of the month, it's up.
Is that the one that...
Down here on...
Heberline?
Yeah.
Then the one on May.
Oh, okay. Okay. Dave wanted to follow up. Last meeting, we talked about those half blocks to turn them into C1A and C2A on Broadway, or south of Broadway, the south half of those blocks, and we wanted to just have time to drive by and look at it, which I hope you guys all did. So how do you feel about proceeding? You know, the one thing somebody brought up to me was that it will still be taxed as commercial property, and the owner knows that.
What should be taxed, um, shoes, um...
Okay, because being C1A, it's not gonna turn it into residential property, it's still gonna be commercial, and taxed at the higher rate.
I don't know how she taxes multifamily or anything.
Well, it's still commercial.
Well, I think if somebody's living there, I don't know, this is a guess.
Well, wait a second, we shouldn't have a C1A if we're not gonna keep it commercial.
Well, if you're allowing residential...
If it's a residential use of the structure, then it's taxed at residential rate.
Is that right?
I say that because I live in C1.
You're in C1?
Yes. It's taxed on...
So your property is actually a C1? Your house is C1, but you're taxed at 11.5? Oh, okay.
But I think it's, I've talked to some people about it, who had some concerns, and I think the consensus was if it's not on Broadway, it's keeping the buildings upkept and used, and it's a beneficial thing.
Okay, so at this time, we would probably want to go ahead and make a motion to proceed to create a C1A? No?
Oh, I guess you want to make a motion, that's fine, yeah.
Yeah, to create a C1A and C2A?
I'm just starting on the notices and stuff and taking it to the planning commission, and it will come back to you guys for final approval.
Or do you just need consensus that this is what we're...
Yeah, basically.
Just consensus?
Just consensus, because it'll come back.
It's gonna come back to you.
Is there a consensus for Dave to proceed?
Yes.
Creating a C1A and a C2A? I see all shaking heads, yes.
The only amount of change in those, in C1 and C2 is the residential part. About to be in the upper levels, so...
Okay.
Won't be a whole lot of changes, it'll stay the same, just for that residential part.
Okay, great. Is there anything else you need, Dave? Are you on here for anything else?
I don't think so.
Okay. Thank you.
See ya.
All right. So we are done through business and discussion items, no other notices and hearings. So we are at the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Oh, you moved your paper. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven oh. The next item is appropriations ordinance?
Move to approve appropriation ordinance 3684 in the amount of $520,973.83.
I second.
Is there any discussion?
Well, I might mention, there are a couple of large items that we paid A H R S Construction Company, and this involves several projects, we place the street, Carolina, Third to Fifth, 20th, north to the airport, and ADA ramps. And that amount is $222,500. And then, to inline construction, also for several projects, hometown drive reconstruction, plus there was a base failure charge. Demoed the doors and the glass at the library because of the accident, and that total amount was $153,985.
You know, last meeting, I noted that Fifth and Carolina, how there was a huge gap there for the transition, and they laid all that, and it looks really nice. It looked like it was gonna be this huge job, and our guys did a great job, so it looks nice and smooth now, so... All right, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Boss? Yes. Graham?
Yes.
Hughes? Frye? Schroller? Yes. Throm? Barnes? Seven zero?
All right. Austin?
Just a couple items. One, financials. Through 75% of the year, the general fund has only spent 65.4% of the budget. General fund is in good shape, with $122,389 more than the end of September of last year, in 2017. One large item is expected to come out of the general fund, which is $60,000 for ADA ramps. Everything else remains the same, we should be in pretty good shape by the end of the year, as long as we kept our spending at a certain amount. Water went down due to $90,000 expenditure towards North Street water line project, and sewer keeps going up. Sales tax fund is almost at $1.4 million. But that, with these expenditures to street projects, it's going to go down. But with the high influx, oh, let's say, higher than last year's influx of sales tax dollars, it's still looking pretty good. I think we'll end on a high note comparing to 2017 numbers throughout the year. Any questions on financials?
We just went to a conference, Darlene and Diane and I, and I met the city administrator that said their carryover, when he was brand new, their carryover was $235,000, was that about right? Carryover from one year to the next? And in another account, I think it was a water account, had $68,000. Needless to say, that first year was a very difficult year. But I was sitting there thinking, wow, $235,000...
What town was that, do you remember?
I'd rather not say.
I'm assuming it got better from there.
Yeah, he had a lot of work to do that first year.
Well, he inherited it from somebody else.
Yes, but I don't think he had any idea it was gonna be that bad till he got in and started looking at the financials, so... So when we look at our $7 million cash balance, I want you to think about that compared to somebody who has $235,000, so...
He didn't do it.
That was my only comment.
There's nothing else. With the recent changes in staff, and the upcoming changes, I have a recommendation for the replacement of our city clerk to be... Basically, I would recommend that Cindy Holly replace Debbie Price as the next city clerk, starting next week, October 15, 2018. I'm also recommending, as Cindy would move up, I would recommend that Sammy Ralph would also move up effective the same date, October 15. I have no doubt that both of these individuals will step in and do an incredible job. They have both proved themselves in their current positions and are ready to move up to the next level. I'm gonna have all faith in them.
Well, I was very sad to get that email that Debbie Price is leaving the city. We wish her the very best. She's worked here 14 years, is that correct?
Close to 15.
Close to 15 years, and you've made a huge impact on our city, our community. We've been very blessed to have you with us. And we will miss your smiling face and kindness at City Hall, as well as your competent work.
Thank you.
Does anyone else want to say anything to Debbie as long as we're talking right now? Or just...
Elvie, thank you, Debbie.
Yeah, thank you and best wishes. Thank you.
In downtown.
We're glad you're not living down.
Thank you.
We know where you live.
I do have a little something I'd like to read.
Oh, absolutely.
Now, or do we want to wait to...
No, no, go ahead.
Since this is my last meeting, I just wanted to say thank you to the many council members and mayors I've worked with over the years. I will always be appreciative of your knowledge, support, and encouragement. I have seen your dedication firsthand and know the many hours you take outside of the regular meetings, helping to make Marysville better and move it forward. I didn't think I would get choked up, I'm gonna. My hope is that you will continue to utilize and respect the knowledge of the staff, doing what's right and best for our community. Thank you to my coworkers. I've learned so much from all of you, and you should be proud of all you do to keep the city going. You never take center stage, you work behind the scenes to make it all happen. Your dedication and talents are truly appreciated, and I will always treasure the friendships I've made. A huge thank you to the citizens and community of Marysville. The support's been unwavering over the years during the good, the bad, and everything in between. Please continue to share your ideas and voice your concerns. I'm excited for the future, moving on to my next adventure. I will always look back on my role with the city with gratitude, fondness, and much appreciation.
We had some bad, you said good? Thank you for getting us through the bad.
Wild times.
Okay. Is there anything else you want?
No, thank you.
Austin, did you have anything else?
No.
All right, we'll move along to standing committees. On, so before we get started, I just wanted to say thank you for Brian Gunther helping with the homecoming parade. It was a nice, cool brisk, but it was nice. And Kevin got to ride up there with Brian, so...
It's nice up there.
Yeah, I bet you were warmer than the rest of us, so we appreciate Brian Gunther doing that. I want to say something about the chip and seal. I think it is huge that I have not heard one negative comment about chip and seal, and all I've heard is how nice it looks and that there's no dust. So I'm so thankful we decided to pay that extra money for the hay dye. And it looks good, I really like the color.
It matches, it matches the brick.
Yeah, so it's really nice. So we'll go back to the salt shed real quick. It's on page 45. And Austin, do you want to talk about that?
The street committee actually had the meeting on October 2 at 2:30. Basically, we had it out south of the street shop in a field where we store, or a lot where we store equipment and pipe. And I'll just read what I put together from the meeting. After some conversation, and Terry can correct me if I'm off on any of this. After some conversation, the committee is recommending the placement of the salt shed at the property located on the northwest corner of the intersection of Third and Elm. Currently, this location is used to store vehicles and pipe and other materials that we don't have an indoor location to store. The committee is recommending a salt shed that is 40 foot wide by 50 foot long. The committee feels this is a size that would be adequate for current and future salt loads. There will be, there will need to be some work done to the property to prepare it for the salt shed. For instance, removal of trees and dirtwork are main components that need to be completed so the ground can settle enough. And I put a map in there with the red area approximately where the recommended site would be, and I approximated the 40 by 50, so that's about what it might look like, what the space might take up of the land.
Terry, you were at the meeting, do you have anything else to add?
No, I think it would save a lot of money by putting it there for the city, and it would be handier without putting the money out for a lot of pavement and a lot of gravel road for a salt shed.
And who else was on the committee?
Bobby.
Oh, just the two of you?
She's not here. There was one person that suggested to me that if we would have put a building, the full length of that across the alley, because they could have put their trucks and stuff in, and it was, we could maybe incorporate it so that they would have a shelter there and a salt shed. That was just something that somebody said, that didn't have nothing to do with the meeting.
Okay. So I guess Gary's okay with this?
Yeah.
And Kent Markman is okay with it?
Yeah, he did talk about the possibility of a, the shed, a separate shed that we talked about, like a whole, simple, no cement floor or anything special.
A shed.
A shed, somewhere where we can...
For storage?
For storage.
In that same area?
Or like where we talked about previously.
Third and Elm?
Yeah, at the end of Second and Elm, yeah.
Second and Elm?
Yeah.
Yeah, that location, I'm perfectly fine with putting up a storage area there, just as long as we don't have to put pavement. It seemed a lot of pavement to get a salt shed, so I like this location better. You're just gonna continue to dump it on Elm and they'll load it in?
Yeah.
And so the, you're still going with the concrete floor?
Concrete floor and concrete walls. Yes.
Fabric top?
I'm leaning towards a fabric top. And now, I'm gonna check prices on both and just longevity. I did get a response from somebody who does sell a fabric top, and they said it should last 25 to 30 years. But one of the, one of the other companies had an actual 15-year warranty on their stuff, so I wouldn't be surprised if it did, because normally you don't warranty something up until it dies. You don't want to replace it.
So 15 years, it'll probably last 25, that's what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay, so how do you guys feel about this? This is our final answer, that this is a good location, a good size?
And I'll bring back the bid documents, so you can have a look at it.
I'm much happier with it here.
I think it's a good place for it, I'm just concerned about, and I know it's gotten brought up before. I mean, we need to do something, I mean, we're trying to get Marysville cleaned up, and if you drive around and look at the piles of stuff, if it was me as a plumber or anybody else had those piles laying around...
You're talking about city stuff?
Multiple notices from the city.
And maybe we need to focus on that building at the end of Second and Elm and clear that out?
That building would solve a lot, the actual shed.
Either that, or, because I know he's, I know he's heading budget to a new water shop at some point, right?
Right.
I mean, I don't have a problem with putting it down there, except I get weary of putting a building here and a building there and the next thing you know, you've got your stuff strewn out to multiple sites.
Well, it's only about two blocks away, so that's why, it's pretty convenient for the whole...
True, but I'm just saying if we're gonna start, if we're just gonna kind of give them most of that area...
Where it's at now, we can see it. And we put it on the end of Second Street, if somebody wants to drive around, come in the backside, borrow something and go with it, we'll never know.
Well, you're saying on this, you think that you can put a storage shed big enough? Well, we don't want to put it so it's gonna be damaged by the salt.
The, I guess the overall question is, because we want to put more than just on the, that's on the slot. We want a parking spot for the bucket truck, a parking, maybe even a parking spot for the grader, the oiler, and all that stuff, so...
You're not gonna have any of that by the time you put that shed in?
No. And we want to end the shed. We want to end the shed.
That's what I said, in a shed.
Yeah, so while I'm getting what you're saying, this spot for that large of a shed is...
Correct.
Well, as long as it's secure, is that what you're...
If you take the water department plastic pipe and that stuff, and you move it down there on the end of Second Street where it's out of sight, out of mind...
In a building, though.
Yeah.
In a secure building.
Yeah, I don't know.
We're gonna, we'll see how big we need to make it first and decide from there. If we, if we do, I mean, we could probably, we'd probably have to take out the rest of those trees. Not super excited about it, but to keep it organized down there, I think that would be necessary. Now, it does get messed up a little bit, because that's where we tell our contractors to go store their stuff, so that's, that'll be a challenge to keep them in line, but we can definitely work on it.
Okay, is the consensus of council to proceed? With, do you want to, okay, do you want a motion to proceed as presented with the salt shed on Elm and Third? I would entertain a motion?
Do we need to proceed and get bids, or do you...
Just for him to, before he drafts up another one, I thought we should...
I'll bring you back the bid specs, or the thing that I've showed you guys with the updated specs, yeah.
I move to proceed.
Okay, so second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
I'm wanting, while I was trying to get those bids, I think it'd be nice if we'd check around, and I think somebody will come in and take those trees for the trees.
And there are people who do that, yes.
Yes, and if you had find that out, so that we could start getting it leveled up, too.
I can start looking for people to take them.
It could be, it saves, rather than paying somebody to take them out, maybe somebody will take them out for the wood.
The challenge of that is hopefully we can find somebody, because if we, if we don't find somebody who wants to come, I don't see why they wouldn't want these trees. But if somebody just doesn't step up and take them...
I know, because I had that walnut tree on my property, and I kind of asked a few people, and a lot of times those guys don't want the ones from in town, because they've had, you know, clotheslines around them and nails put in them and signs hung on them. I mean, maybe, maybe we'll get lucky and somebody will want it, but I know they're kind of hesitant ones in town of what they're gonna hit with their saws.
Would you mind stopping by tomorrow and talk to me about it?
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Six one. All right. Let's, the salt shed, water, wastewater. My only question to Austin was the North Street water project, about whether the grass, the reseeding, making it flat, was all part of the contract?
Yes, they should be putting it back as it was, and this is when we had a contract, an actual written contract that CES put together, and pretty much with, just like we had last year, they reseeded everything, and so it's the same contractor as last year.
But different contractor?
Different contractor.
Yeah, because Deep Creek, I think, did an excellent job, and I've had one, at least one owner come and tell me that the soil they put on top was a lot rockier, so hopefully we'll get it cleaned up for them. And the sample stations, I know most of those are all out now, the water sample stations?
There's quite a few out, I'm not sure of the number.
Are we just putting five in, or seven?
How many were there? There was like 15.
There's 15?
Yes. Yeah. We need that many sample locations.
I thought-
Because we, we, it's like five in each quadrant, or something like that.
I thought we used to do, when I read the report, there were five locations.
That's per month, and you got to rotate, you rotate, yeah.
Okay.
There, yeah.
So we have 15, so all of those, I hate to be stupid, but you're just going to open it up and there's a water faucet there?
Yes.
That's all it is?
Yeah.
You open it up?
Just basically, yeah, a hydrant or-
A hydrant?
Yeah. And it'll drain back, so it doesn't freeze and all that, it's set up for that, and he turns it on, lets it run for a little bit, and takes a sample. And then, currently, we go, we have houses, and I got asked to do this, fortunately, we were putting, we just started putting these in, so we didn't need them. But we ask, we ask people to let us go into your house and, and take samples from your faucet. Now, that doesn't sound like much, but when he does samples here, he has to let it run for like 10 minutes at a time to get everything out of it and take a sample, and then do all this work and all that, and then he's out, so.
Will he have to do the sample stations too?
He'll have to do the running, the normal running of the water at sample stations, but he, he won't have to, he won't have to invade people's homes.
Okay. All right. You guys have anything for water, did I ask if you had anything for street? Did anybody else have anything for street? Okay. Did anybody have anything for water, wastewater?
Yeah, there's a fire hydrant down on the end of First and Calhoun, it's had a lock on it for about two and a half months now. I think if we got a fire hydrant, we need to fix it instead of just putting a lock on the cap of it.
We have a few of them that we haven't gotten to. They just, when they had the fire at the, at the jail, they found out there was a big crack down that fire hydrant on the corner. And then, it took them a little bit of time, but it's, it's trying to catch up to it. So First and Calhoun, I'll make sure, it's, it's got a lock and a blue notice around it, okay.
You say those were from the jail break?
Well, no, the one right by my, by the cor, on the corner, there was a crack on it.
I was like, that First and Calhoun is from the jail break?
No, no.
Okay.
I'm just, I was just expressing the point, we're trying to catch up, yeah.
Okay. All right. Any other water, wastewater, parks and rec?
Hey, yes, Madam Mayor. I came in to, I feel there's something important that the council should know, and it pertains to the fact that in the weekly highlights, it says the disc golf baskets are here. I feel it's pretty important that the people that, that know that, where the motion was made, and I'm, maybe knew, maybe didn't, but when Councilman Barnes made the motion, was he aware that there's private property on that side of the block? That there are, the Patterson Trust, were you aware of that?
Yeah, you're talking about the trees?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Was that taken into consideration on the, when you made your motion?
I don't think any of the baskets are actually on their property, are they?
If they, if they are-
I mean, I'm not saying inherent, this can't end up there, but-
If they are, the, our idea, if they were drawn on that general map, we wouldn't know what allowed it. So I, I don't know specifically how, if they indeed planted it on that, but it would, as far as staff was going to do, it wasn't going to be allowed.
So you'll just make sure they're all in city property?
Yes.
Because you're supposed to assist.
Yeah, assist, not, not, no labor.
Not do the work. You're assistant.
The reason I wanted to talk to the council about this is that I really feel we voted on something, if we, if we all knew that that was private property, I'm not wanting to change anything, all I'm saying is, I don't think we should ever do this again where we don't have all the information. And that, that information was out there, and we could have got it from somebody, and it might have made a difference in what people decided to do. And, so, I don't want it to happen again where we vote on something that we really don't know what we're voting on.
I don't know if it's discussed at council or not, but I know it came up in at least a half dozen of the three dozen meetings that I was in on it, that that was, that section, because it was undefined, because there's no markers or anything out there. It's kind of hard to tell, that whole ponding area is kind of carved up all over the place.
Well, I understand that he marked it, it's marked now.
Oh, it is?
Dale, Dale did go out and mark it, yes.
Good, he had mentioned he might do that.
And I had talked to Austin, well, I read in the highlights too, to make sure we have that agreement done about some, about people on city property installing the baskets, so Craig, city attorney's working on that before the baskets will be done, Austin said.
Well, yeah, before anything is installed, we'll, I'll have something ready to go.
Anything else, Terry?
Well, I was just kind of worried about, I figured we kind of approved something that we didn't know about, and, but it's silverware and done, I just wanted to bring it to everybody's attention. So, and then I'm still worried about how we're going to handle the deal with the school board. I'm going to go to putting that over there, because we haven't, we haven't addressed that yet. Everybody thinks you can just put up a sign, you can't put up a sign because that's illegal.
Well, we talked about, well, we didn't, we were waiting to hear back from Mr. Mullins.
No, I think the last time it was discussed that, in that, with the red lettering that Craig had put in there, I think you guys said, we shouldn't do that, because it's, there's an exception, that instead of that, we just put a sign up that says if there's anybody in, in this area, don't throw the frisbee.
Yeah, the, the disc golf would be closed or something.
Something, that, that hole itself, yeah.
As long as there's not a sign designating priority, because priority's discrimination, and, and we can't put up signs for that reason. So that's why I wonder how he's going to handle that, you know? It's an interesting subject, because if you look at all the statutes and our own code, if we do that, we're going to be violating something, violating it. Something to think about.
Make sure we get the sign right?
Well, and actually, we voted to do exactly what this plan was. That's what the motion says. The motion says that's how it's going to be.
So, so-
And actually, now, if it's not, if this is just a smokescreen, and then we're going to go change it around from the map of how it was designated by the gentleman that designed it, then we're not doing what we, what we put a motion out to do.
So you're saying our motion was to say as presented, as he presented?
Right.
Now we know it can't be as presented?
Well, if it's going to be tweaked, it's not going to be as presented.
What?
Terry, he was-
The, the whole time he presented it, he said that was, in gen, in general, what this might look like. It was never, he never said it was a finite, we GPS this location, and GPS this location, this is exactly where we wanted. He said there's always play in this map, if it wasn't going to work.
But I believe the motion said, didn't you make a ton that said just as, as it was presented on that?
I said as presented, because I was worried about if I didn't say as presented, people were going to go, well, I don't like this one right here, and I don't like this one right here, and the next thing we'd have like four holes. Yeah, and that's why I said that.
And I thought, and I felt the idea of putting me and Dale on this is to make sure that we weren't going on people's property, and we were making sure, especially with the temporary status that was assigned to this layout.
There is a room for interpretation because of your input. In other words, I mean, if it's, we aren't, there wasn't a technical document, it didn't say this many feet from this, this many feet, so there would be some interpretation regardless of installation.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
What we voted, or what, the motion that we passed says CM Barnes moved Fry second to allow this to be installed in City Park as laid out in plans presented by Kyle Garaki. And Councilman Graham asked to make a little bit of change, and then, it's right in the minutes that CM Barnes and Councilman Fry would not accept amendment from CM Graham to modify Kyle Garaki's City Park Plan course. So we voted to do it like Kyle wanted it, and that's what we have to do. And for to say we're going to go in and tweak it, that's not part of what we said we were going to do.
We can make another motion and change it at any time.
That's correct, but as this stands right now, if we do what we said we were going to do here, we got to do it correctly.
So do we want to make a motion to say that all baskets will be on city property?
When are they planning on installing it, do we know?
It hasn't even come to-
Can we maybe, I hate to kick the can down the road, but I think we're going to be relitigating this forever, so I want to make sure we have our, all of our i's dotted and t's crossed, maybe before we make another motion, because I sincerely believe we'll just be working on it forever if we don't. And since this, I'm just kind of jumping out now, I don't think we should act, personally, I don't think we should act on it at this moment, but at the next meeting, so that we have our bases covered.
So are you thinking that, by the next meeting, they'll have figured out where they're going to put them, is that what you're saying?
Well, I just, I want any possible problems that could be identified between now and then to be identified, and for the Parks and Rec Committee, or Ad Hoc Committee, or someone, to put together a omnibus motion that will solve, or hopefully solve, all of those concerns. I don't want us to put out this fire now, and we're putting out another fire that we haven't identified yet.
So with this-
Madam Mayor?
-school, and with the property-
If there's more than one concern, then let's address the concerns.
The Ad Hoc Committee got overrode last time, are we going to override them again if you start talking Ad Hoc Committee, because-
Well, the council can do whatever it wants.
Yeah.
They overrode it the last time, and if that happens again, we'll be just kicking it down the road again a little bit farther.
So, is the desire of council for a revised plan to present it to the Ad Hoc Committee? Tell me, tell me what you guys want, so that it can be discussed prior to council and prior to installation?
I'd just like to see everything disclosed, excuse me for buttoning.
What if we, what if everyone, I don't know if you want to do it the Ad Hoc, or the Parks Committee can probably handle it. Any, any council people who have concerns, please address them to, or send them to Debbie or whomever to get to that committee, so that committee can meet and address them, and advance to the next meeting and come with ideas to line out each of those concerns. Does that make sense?
So you don't want, you don't want the committee to meet, or you do want the committee to meet after all the-
I want to make sure all of the council's concerns are addressed.
Well, you want all the council concerns sent to the city clerk?
So that they're-
And do you want to have a committee to discuss those before we come to council?
Yeah, that way we have-
What they recommend?
Yes.
Okay.
As far as answers to each of those concerns, as best they are able.
And Mayor, one, one thing we never talked about was, Lakeview was supposed to be also have a six-month trial, but they don't have standard baskets.
Terry, what did the-
So we never addressed that.
Pardon?
What the motion read about Lakeview? The motion, do you have, what the motion read about Lakeview?
I got the whole motion there.
I don't think there was a motion about-
CM Fry suggested working with Brian Frogel. I'll be right there. Okay, CM Graham asked to include modification of Kyle Garaki's plan to include some safety measures to modify holes at Lakeview complex and to get comparisons of the two for. CM Fry suggested working with Brian Frogel at Lakeview would not to, oh, and they would not modify Kyle Garaki's City Park Plan course. So the motion was not to make the modification, but for, I guess we didn't make a motion specifically about CM Fry suggested work with Brian Frogel about Lakeview.
I think that's something as we can talk about.
I thought they were already, they were already reevaluating, Brian and Kyle were already reevaluating that course. I think the, the things they were adjusting were the T, T spot, T's location.
But not the baskets, because the baskets aren't standard.
I think we talked about mixing some of the door baskets with some of the older ones that are, I think, I talked to Frog, did we talk to Frogel? I can't remember. I know a lot of them are put in the ground in fly, I mean, basically cemented, and it wasn't, it's not any deal to get down, not damage to, because they were made with a long pole and then cemented in place, basically.
Are you on the rec committee?
Uh, yeah.
Are you on the rec committee?
No. You're mine? You're on the park, are you?
Yeah.
I think you are, so to make, just make sure all discussions-
We're in a mess.
Yeah, I think you're two-thirds of the rec committee, so you need to make sure all discussions are as a committee. So, with that being said-
Madam Mayor?
Yeah.
I have some copies here, everybody could have one of, of that round that's on the other side of the park that shows where the part is as private.
Okay.
Give everybody, because they've got a copy already what Kyle Garaki's deal was.
Okay, going back to this Lakeview thing, what you guys want discussed about Lakeview should go to Debbie as well, so we know all that will be discussed at the committee meeting, all right? So we're going to discuss Lakeview, we're going to discuss basket location, or any kind of modifications?
Any other concerns that you haven't voiced, it'd be a good time to hash it all.
Okay, do you want to pass those out just like-
Yes.
Excuse me?
Don't think it's going to stop.
I say for Lakeview and the park.
Yeah, yeah.
And this is what Dale just recently marked out in, in that field up there, so if you want to go see it in person.
He's marked that off?
Yeah.
Okay. And so where is city property then? Have you identified city property?
It says city property where it is.
Where it's not marked up.
City of Marysville here, and this is city of Marysville too?
Yeah.
Okay, so this is city? This is city? And you're not going to put any in the gardens, right? Are these where the trees are, though?
That's the park, isn't it?
The city's put some trees on that property already.
I know, but I, so have we put trees on city property too?
I don't think-
Over on this side, have trees gone there?
Part of it is, and part of it isn't, I believe.
Okay.
Dale supposedly's got it marked down there where everybody could go down and look now.
Okay. All right, so all concerns need to go to Debbie, we'll try to have a meeting before the ne, we'll try to have a discussion. I mean, we're not holding him up at this point, are we?
Holding who up?
The installation of the baskets?
No, because we still have to get that agreement.
Okay, I just want to make sure that it doesn't come back that the city is delaying this. So, to Debbie, within the, today is Monday, so if you can get your concerns to her this week, and try to have a meeting towards the end of next week, before the council meeting on the 22nd. Is that all right with everyone? Okay. Thanks for doing this? And hopefully, we'll figure out. Do we decide that we're going to, is it going to be the rec committee or the Ad Hoc Committee?
I think the rec.
Send it to rec on park property.
Who's the third on the rec committee? Gina, okay. All right, so we'll set it up with the rec committee towards the end of next one, week. All right. Anything else on Parks and Rec? Cemetery and Airport? Police and Fire, other than the meeting for the ATVs? Admin and Finance? Okay, we will move along to the appointments. The first one is for Cindy Holly. I asked Debbie if there's a range for this position, you know, we, we do those range for most positions, but this is not a range position, because it's exempt. Did I have that right? And so, her rate is recommended by Austin at $21.50. We do have a policy currently that says that all department heads have to live within a three-mile radius of the city. We can make this an exception to that policy.
Madam Mayor, I would, I'm not moving, I would propose we go into executive session to discuss non-elected personnel, perhaps?
Regarding-
Just because of this, and because this is all kind of sudden, and, I mean, I don't know if the Admin and Finance Committee has discussed this night or in others, but I think it'd be fodder for the whole council, perhaps?
To discuss a specific performance?
Correct.
So, oh no, I didn't bring my motion.
Did you bring your sheet? Did you bring your sheet? I don't have the KSA in front of me, but I can make the motion without it hanging out.
I have the previous minutes, it's in there.
We didn't have, did we have executive recession last time?
Seven, five, four, three, one, nine.
Oh, we did. Okay, so, um...
Kind of have to read that.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. I don't have it in front of me. Um, Madam Mayor, I move that the council, uh, go into executive session to discuss non-elected personnel, exception KSA 75 dash four, three, one, nine, B1, to discuss employee matters or performance matters, uh, including the governing body and no one else.
Okay, not Austin?
Not Austin.
Okay, just the nine of us, eight of us?
Four.
For how long?
For, yeah, good call, uh, for 10 minutes, uh, beginning at 8:10, coming back at 8:20.
Come back, is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
All right.
Opposed? 10 minutes. Come get us.
Didn't know you had your own coffee?
No. Last one.
Okay, we're resuming, um, regular session, no binding decisions were made during executive session. So we're back to, um, the appointment of Cindy Holly as city clerk, and the proposed rate is $21.50 per hour.
I move that Lucinda Holly, um, be appointed as city clerk at $21.50 an hour.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven, oh. The next item is Sammy Ralph. This would be the appointment as well to deputy city clerk. Um, she does have a range, she is paid hourly, and, um, Austin recommended a 17.7 per hour. And what's she currently making?
Uh, 15.17.
15.17. Now, the beginning of range 17 is what?
Oh.
Sorry, did I ask you for that? So the range is 15.78 to 25.31 for range 17. Um, and historically, we do start at the lower end of the range. Um, she is making 15.17 now. How do you guys feel?
Well, we're not into her job, excuse me.
Her job is utility clerk?
That's the one she's stepping in now.
Yes, she's utility clerk, so we'll have to hire a utility clerk, we're also looking for a payroll clerk. So she would move over and learn the deputy clerk's job and probably do both until we find somebody.
Pretty much.
Good entry.
Um, I recommended 17.17 because I know, uh, that just judging from the fact how she stepped in to, um, to her current job as utility clerk, uh, we went back and made the adjustment just on how well she did. Um, I wanna pay her like I know she's going to step in and, and take over, take control. I also wanna pay her because she's going to be training the next one in line for a utility clerk. Um, and probably helping out with Cindy, uh, training the new one, uh, that's going to be, uh, for the payroll clerk. So it's, um, it's a huge transition. Uh, I know she's going to, I don't know, do very well, that's where this, this came from. And just a slight bump from where she's at, I didn't think was, was adequate.
But that's up to you. We can go ahead and, hey, you guys wanna have heard the appointment and then talk salary, or you wanna do it all at once?
Let's do it all at once, I would say.
Okay, so do you wanna have the, you guys have any, you don't have any questions about her doing the role of deputy clerk, correct? It's really, if anything, would be the salary? And does anyone wanna discuss what they believe the salary should be other than that as proposed by Austin?
This is a dollar, over a dollar less than what Cindy is making right now. A dollar, at least a dollar fifty an hour less.
How long has Cindy been deputy clerk?
February 2008.
Eight years?
Ten years.
Ten years? She was hired in as deputy clerk? Okay. So, thoughts?
I think apparently it's a pretty hot market, so we should hang on to the good people we have.
Okay.
So I move to approve the appointment of Samantha Ralph as deputy city clerk at 17.17 an hour.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven, oh, all right, now we have two new people and even though Debbie's leaving in spite of that. Okay, um, I do think we need to, uh, go into executive session again for non, uh, for non-elected personnel matters, the same motion. Um, I think we should include Austin, and, uh, do you wanna read the motion again?
I already did it once.
Okay, you can pass it to Diane, I don't care.
I do.
But, but we probably need it for, um, 20 minutes.
All right, uh, I move we recess into executive session pursuant to non-elected personnel exception KSA 75 dash four, three, one, nine, B1 to discuss employee performance matters, including the governing body and administrator Austin.
For 20 minutes?
For 20 minutes to return at 8:46.
8:46, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
All right, 21.
Going back to order, no binding decisions were made. I do think we need to go back into executive session, at least 10 minutes with just a governing body. Okay. Somebody wanna take that, make that motion?
I'm making a motion. We can go back and execute.
Oh, for the same motion?
Yes.
Can we say ditto? Do we have to say the same motion? Does she need to read this motion? Okay, for 10 minutes.
Which one is this? This one here?
That one there.
Uh, I move to, um, go into executive session pursuant to a non-elected personnel exception KS 75, four, three, one, nine, B1 to discuss employee performance matters, which includes both the governing body.
Yeah, beginning at 8:48 and ending at 9 o'clock.
9 o'clock.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay.
For a day.
All right, calling the order, no binding decisions were made during executive session, and we will carry on. Do you have my packet?
Oh.
So no binding decisions were made, and now we will carry on. And the only thing we have is roundtable, I just wanna say, oh, K-Met, thanks to Debbie and staff that we're still gold. And the cool thing about this is that it does reduce our workman's comp for 5%. So we're very glad, when I first started on council, we were silver and now we're gold. So thank you staff for doing that. And, uh, the league training was exceptional. I am kinda overwhelmed on things, questions, things I think we can apply to our city to make our city great. And, um, then, uh, last thing is Debbie, you'll be missed.
Thank you.
All right, Darlene.
Well, first, uh, again...
Oh, can I do one more thing? One more thing. Um, there's a city clerk fundamentals elective in November that I think Cindy should go to. Okay.
Again, uh, thank you Debbie for all your years of service. Today there was the awards luncheon and, um, we have a number of the Marysville employees and volunteers, uh, mentioned, uh, for 20-year awards, Sean Cohores firefighter, Gary Gundlefinger street supervisor, Ruth Mashmeyer police, um, clerk, Parker Price firefighter, Dale Richardson cemetery apartment supervisor, Dean Thomas firefighter, and then 15-year Delmar Gross maintenance.
We value our long-term employees, all our employees, but our long-term ones.
I, from, I'm always picking up things that, that there are people who didn't show up, so I'll give these to Austin and you can share with the employees to show them where their names are.
Thank you.
And, uh, it was an excellent, um, conference, and I really encourage all of you who didn't attend, uh, attend next year, and...
I think it was one of the best conferences as far as learning information. Did you, you get that little graph? You wanna tell them about that little graph? That was on that piece of paper about how trusting local government?
Oh.
That was important stuff.
Uh, yes, there was, uh, there was a survey, uh, which level of government do you have the greatest level of trust in? City, 37.6%, county, 20%, state, 23.2%, and federal, 19.2%.
So, so rock solid. So we, we were, we're, we're looking good here in the local government.
Okay, this is, uh, 52 tips for successful public service, so I got extra ones for the ones of you who didn't come. I had received one of those in the past, and it's got all these tips in here. Every so often, I dig mine out and read it again, so.
Thank you.
And that's it for Debbie.
That's it. All right, Gina?
Thank you Debbie.
Thank you, dear.
And I'd also like to thank the Marshall County Arts Cooperative for the artistic experience of the Chinese Cultural Center dancers. My boys and I really enjoyed it, enjoyed their performance, it was really neat.
Cool. Terry?
Yeah, gonna miss you Debbie.
Thank you, Terry.
I hope you're happy with your doing, next thing you're gonna do.
Thanks.
That's all I have tonight.
Todd?
Well, thanks Debbie for all the information and guidance and friendly communications and everything for these last seven-ish years, and, um, congrats on your, your new gig and I hope you enjoy it, and I'm sure they will soon be begging and pleading you never to leave them, so.
Thank you.
Diane?
Thank you Debbie, you helped me a lot since I started, had a lot to learn, and I learned a lot today. I was very overwhelmed because this was my first time, so it was very interesting. So I'm still trying to dig through all the stuff that I got, so...
It's gonna take a while, the process will.
Yes, yes, but it was a real learning experience and I learned a lot of stuff by visiting with all the other, uh, council people and administrators and everybody, uh, so it was really very interesting, so, so thank you for letting me go.
Kevin?
Debbie, you will be truly, truly missed here. Your endeavors near onwards.
Thanks for all the years you've been in Debbie. I kinda served on here with you for that long, but you're, you're gonna be missed. You always were more than helpful for me whenever I came into stupid questions.
Good. Stupid questions. She'll probably miss that, won't you? Those stupid, stupid questions? Okay, with that being said, I would entertain a motion to adjourn?
We do adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 1006, not bad.